To the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual liberty and justice.
Good job, buddy. Rule call.
Frank Scott.
Here.
Mark Serbuk.
Present.
Ron Vaughn. Brad Newbecker.
Present.
Jenny Davis.
Here. Item two, approval of the agenda. Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda? Commissioners? Commissioner Scott?
I know.
So can we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the agenda?
We have a motion from Commissioner Serbuk. Do we support?
I'll support.
We have a motion from Commissioner Serbuk with support from Commissioner Marshall? Okay, to approve the agenda as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 3A, review of the minutes. We have January 27, 2022, regular meeting minutes.
Review the minutes and I'll make the motion.
I have a correction.
You have a correction, Commissioner?
I'll make a motion to accept.
Just in the committee reports undermined says rural city fire, strike rural city.
We have a motion from Commissioner Scott. Do we have support?
Support.
Support from Commissioner Newbecker to make the changes that were stated. Any other discussion? All in favor, say yes.
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 Motion carries. Item 3B, February 3, 2022, Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes. We have a motion from Commissioner Abby to approve the February 3, 2022 Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes. Do we have support? Want to support it? We have support from Commissioner Ethan to approve the February 3, 2022 Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 4, public comment on agenda items only. I am going to read this one time today. This is for agenda items only. This is the first of two opportunities for public comment. On December 10, 2020, the Board of Commissioners approved Resolution 20-77 to adopt rules of procedure that include a structure for public comment. This public comment period is limited to topics that appear on the meeting agenda. A second public comment period appears later in the agenda, at which time public statements will be accepted on any manner or issue that is relevant or germane to county government. Persons who wish to address the board are required to comply with the following. One, state your name for the record. Two, speak only to the chairperson. Three, stand behind the podium when speaking. Four, limit comments to three minutes or fewer. And five, follow the direction of the chairperson when speaking. Board rules do not impose restriction on subject matter. However, failure to follow the direction of the chairperson will result in not being able to talk or being removed from the meeting. The board chairperson reserves the right to sound the gavel when the audience applauds or derides a speaker. On behalf of the Board of Commissioners, we thank you in advance for your compliance with these rules. Is there any public comment on agenda items? In the room? Any public comment in the room? Any public comment on the phone?
Hi, good morning. This is Brian with Advisor Care. You guys can hear me or not?
I can, Brian. You're not. Oh, you know what? You are on the agenda. So go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, guys. My comment simply was to just express my appreciation to the board and and the conversation we've had over the last several weeks. And just want to again thank you guys for having our resolution and urging the state and providers and insurance companies alike to continue conversations around the sustainable fee schedule cap. So thank you guys again for your, all the work you do and just really appreciate the time that it's taken with myself and Eddie in the room today. Just really appreciate it. And the families we serve appreciate it as well. So thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
Yep.
Any other public comment on the phone? Okay, item five, correspondence. I didn't see any on the. Item six, action on consent calendar. I would like to take each one of these individually. You guys okay with that? Item seven, a resolution to declare February 10, 2022 is Oglema County Kids' Day. I would like to read that. Would you like to read this? No?
They'll point her.
So this is the resolution that we're about to pass. Resolution to declare February 10, 2022 is Oglema County Kids' Day. Whereas the Oglema County Board of Commissioners recognize today's kids as tomorrow's leaders. And whereas 20 youths were selected to participate in the first Kids' Day as a public official program in Oglema County. And whereas these 20 participants were selected based on their individual behavior and educational excellence. And whereas Oglema County Government Departments probate court 30, probate court, 34th Circuit Court, and 82nd District Court will hold student participation in the educational program. Therefore, be it resolved that the Oglema County Board of Commissioners does hereby declare Tuesday, February 10, 2020, is Oglema County Kids' Day. Be it further resolved that the board extends its official welcome to all student participants.
There you go. Stella, Stella, you agree with that and you'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution?
We're gonna make a motion to approve the resolution from Commissioner Marshall. Do we have support? Did you say yes? I'm sorry, Commissioner.
I do it all the time. Don't worry.
So we have support from Commissioner, a motion by Commissioner Marshall with support from Commissioner Abby. Is there any discussion on this? If this is excellent, congratulations to all the students that were selected, and I hope you enjoy your day.
I think it's great. I think that we get copies of all this information and they can take with them, especially the rules that you so completely write.
Any other comment, Commissioner Scott? Commissioner Serbuk?
Craigson.
Hey, can we get a rule call vote?
Brad Newbecker.
Yes.
Jenny Davis.
Yes.
Frank Scott.
Yes.
Mark Serbuk.
Yes.
Resolution carries. Item 7B, resolution to establish a deputy county clerk one position and to amend the fiscal year 2022 position allocation list. This resolution is sponsored by the county clerk. On September 29, 2021, the Oglema County Board of Commissioners adopted Resolution 21-120 to approve general appropriations for fiscal year 2022. A position allocation listed was included with Resolution 20-120 to limit the number of permanent employees who can be employed in all departments, offices, and the courts. The county clerk seeks to add a part-time deputy clerk one position to address workload demands of the clerk's office. Funding for the new position is available through a combination of employee attrition and the concealed pistol licensing fund. The proposed resolution will amend the position allocation list to add a part-time deputy clerk one. Adopt a position for the, adopt a position description for the position, establish an hourly pay rate, and authorize a transfer of up to $7,000 from the concealed pistol licensing fund to cost. After the transfer, the concealed pistol licensing fund will be left with a fund balance of $34,869.
We'll make a motion that the resolution be accepted as presented.
We have a motion from Commissioner Serbuk?
I'll second.
Support from Commissioner Scott. Is there any discussion? Is this, I have, I have a question for, this is our clerk, Ms. Goner. Is this, is the workload going to be able to be sustainable once you guys get caught up, once everybody's rolling? Do you feel at this point in time that the workload is going to be?
Just because when it works. So we may have a conversation with such minute. The numbers in court cases are rising and he sees them staying the way they are. Just continuing to go back out now to where we used to. So I do believe so. And then, like I said, they'll, they'll be doing, if it's voted on, they'll be doing civil court. So each of the clerks will have their own court. That'll keep them busy. What they're asking for in this resolution is another part-time position in her office, which is the clerk's office. So that's basically what we're voting on right now. We're just, this, this resolution states where the money's going to come from and how we're going to pay for this position.
Question. We don't have a sunset on this. Is the sunset fiscal year? Because we're, we're.
The middle.
The position allocation list. How's that go? Oh, oh, general, to approve general appropriations for the year 2022, that would be the sunset?
Right. So what this resolution does is states that for this year, you are amending the position allocation list because you've already proved it. So we've got to make that move. And that's why the reference to the current fiscal year 2022. When we begin processing the fiscal year 2023 budget, I am assuming at this time that this position will be included in the budget request from the clerk's office. As part of that, will likely show another transfer from the concealed pistol fund. It'll help fund that position moving forward. And I suspect now that that will be an ongoing transfer that will be requested year to year as the budget's considered. Looking at the concealed pistol fund, my position is that it is sustainable, given the amount of revenue that's brought into that fund each year. And you can see it's got a substantial fund balance right now. And so in addition to what's being brought in each year, there's a pretty large sum in there now to help sustain this even further than what we might otherwise do. So what this ultimately does, assuming we move forward and continue to fund this year to year, is actually allocate some fund rather than letting it just accumulate in an account somewhere and not be spent, being put to use for the purpose that it was intended in the statute. So the short answer is yes, it is addressing just this year. Long term, you'll see that year to year, as you will, to every position of the county, but, and be able to make decisions based on what's presented at that point.
So the funding is sustainable as well as what you're saying? Okay, that was the other question.
And as long as the clerk asks for it in the budget.
Right.
Any other questions? Comments? Rule call vote? Gonna say, say yes for me.
Jenny Davis.
Go ahead.
Yes.
Yes.
Frank Scott.
Yes.
Mark Serbuk.
She said yes.
Yes.
Brad Newbecker.
Yes. Resolution carries. Item 7C, resolution to authorize purchase of a folder slash inserter slash seal, sealer machine. This resolution is sponsored by the county treasurer. Several Oglema County departments have needed for a fast, reliable method of folding and inserting paper and documents into an envelope for, for mass mailing. A folder slash inserter slash sealer machines can process mail 10 times faster than by hand, increasing productivity. The county's folder slash inserter slash sealer machine is obsolete and has reached end of life. The county treasurer recommends accepting the quote provided by the automated business equipment for purchase of a folder slash inserter slash sealer machine at a total cost not to exceed 14, $14,750. Funding for the purchase will be split between the general fund and the tax reversion fund. The proposed resolution authorizes a transfer from the general fund, general appropriations continues to line item, leaving a line item balance of approximately $11,834.
We'll make a motion that we accept the resolution as presented.
We have a motion from Commissioner Serbuk?
I'll second.
With support from Commissioner Scott. Is there any discussion?
Could the treasurer give us clue on like volume of, volume of envelopes done in a year?
Have we talked about that? I'm sorry, do you want us to come up to the?
Please. Yep.
I'd like them to get an understanding why we're getting a machine like this. Just how many envelopes come through this?
Kind of reiterate what you did at the move.
Sure. So last week at Committee of the Whole, we discussed the total volume spread over offices such as the treasurer's office, clerk's office, and utilization has also been offered as a service to the housing department. This is how much mail we approximately process, if you're doing it, it's not that big here. 13,500 per year. And the machine that we have now, I reached out to our salesperson and it was purchased in 2012 and has reached the end of its life cycle.
Any more questions?
Um, we said that the housing department would be utilizing this as well?
Quite possibly. They do a monthly billing as well, and I have offered the service to them as well.
Is there a possibility of other departments utilizing it?
Quite possibly. I can reach out to every department. I'll shoot an email blast out and let them know that we have this machine and it does streamline work productivity, so.
And if that were to happen, would it be fair to split the cost between departments?
Yes, that was something that was mentioned to Tim. It's coming out, if it's a general fund department, the general fund is already observing that, half of the cost.
Bradley, that was a topic we talked about last, last week.
At the Committee of the Whole, I was asked. Any other questions?
I'm all good. Thank you.
You got a quote?
Rule call vote? We'll let him scare you. Well, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Craig Scott?
Yes. Yes.
Brad Newbecker?
Louder. Yeah.
Jenny Davis.
Yes. Resolution passes. Item 7D, resolution to encourage dialogue regarding reimbursement cap for auto accident victims. This resolution is offered in response to discussion at the February 3, 2022 Committee of the Whole meeting. The Michigan No Fall Auto Insurance Reform Act of 2019 introduced a fee schedule slash cap, which took effect on July 1, 2021, to set payment limits on residential care facilities, home healthcare providers, and other persons for providing treatment or care to auto accident, accident victims. As a result, home healthcare providers are now reimbursed at a rate that falls below the entry level rate for positions in many other industries. The proposed resolution encourages dialogue between the Michigan Legislature, medical service providers, and benefit recipients to address a substantial reimbursement cap for residential care facilities, home healthcare providers, and other persons for providing treatment or care to auto accident victims.
We accept the resolution as presented. Oh, don't support.
We have a motion from Commissioner Serbuk with support from Commissioner Newbecker. Is there any discussion? And this is what the public comment Mr. Harrison was, was referring to. Is there any?
Well, as I said before, this is outside our realm. I don't, I think this is a moot point for this commission to, to act on. I, for just the sake of principle, I don't think that we need to take action on this to encourage our state legislatures to work with other people.
I enjoyed, I, I.
Opinion.
I'm sorry, were you done?
Just an opinion.
Okay. I, I thought the wording was very good. And that's what the final, final sentence was, was we encourage communication between these two parties. So I, I, I read very closely to that resolution and I, I did approve of it, so.
I, I mean, I would agree with Commissioner Scott, but I mean, in the past, we have, we have voted on resolutions that were just support for other entities. So I don't, I don't really see a problem with this. It's just, it's just showing the support. Come up with a favorable solution, so I. Obviously, I made the motion to accept it, so I'm in favor of it, so.
Rule call vote?
Mark Serbuk.
Yes.
Brad Newbecker.
Yes.
Jenny Davis.
Yes.
Frank Scott.
Yes.
Oh, put it solid, put it solid as a no. We gotta be different.
Poor kid. Item 7, 7D. Resolution to approve amended fund transfer and to rescind Resolution 21-146. This resolution is sponsored by the county administrator. On November 9, 2021, the Board of Commissioners approved Resolution 20-146 to approve reallocation of $2,901.86 from the rec, from the Roscommon slash Oglema DHHS allocation to the Oglema County Critical Needs Fund. Upon review of the final budget figures, DHHS revised the reallocation request to $1,830.26. The proposed resolution recognizes the revised transfer amount and rescinds Resolution 20-146.
Make a motion that the resolution be accepted as presented. Support.
We have a motion from Commissioner Serbuk with support from Commissioner Newbecker. Any discussion?
Keep the money.
Any other discussion?
What that money goes for is if there are people that Oglema County DHHS has only allocated so much funding from the state for issues to shut off. If they run out of those funds, then they tap into this fund so that people don't lose their heat, their electricity, things like that. So that's what the, that's what that money's for. If they run over their state allocation, then it provides utility services for those in need. Pretty good program.
Yes, and going forward next year, you're going to change the wording so we don't have to rescind this.
Right, yeah. We'll be a little more general.
Okay, any other discussion? Rule call vote?
Brad Newbecker.
Yes.
Yes.
Mark Serbuk.
Yes. Yes or no? Okay, it's okay. Item 7G, resolution honoring Diana Sutherland on the event of her retirement. I'm going to read this in, in entirety. Resolution honoring Diana Sutherland on the event of her retirement. Resolution number 2022, 22, excuse me. Whereas Diana Sutherland began her career with Oglema County on June 24, 1997, as a clerk in the county treasurer's office. And whereas in 1998, Diana transferred to the county clerk's office and was promoted to election coordinator in 2006, then to election coordinator slash officer manager in 2017, serving under county clerk Gary Clacking and Brett Giltner. And whereas during her years of service, Diana routinely went above and beyond the call of duty to assist those in need and proved to be a valuable source of history and knowledge of Oglema County. And whereas after nearly 25 years of dedicated service to the Oglema County, Diana will retire from her position on February 21, 2022. Therefore, be it resolved that the Oglema County Board of Commissioners hereby honors Diana Sutherland for her dedication and commitment to the county of Oglema and extends its sincere appreciation for the many contributions she made to the citizens of Oglema County and for always going the extra mile to assist those in need. Be it further resolved that the Board of Commissioners extends its best wishes to Diana and hopes for continued success in all her future endeavors.
Make a motion to accept the resolution as presented.
How about we support it? Say support.
I make a motion to pass the resolution.
Ethan already, we have, we have a motion from Commissioner Serbuk with support from Commissioner Ethan to support the resolution honoring Diana Sutherland on the event of her retirement. Any discussion? Brett, did you have anything you wanted to add?
We love her. We're gonna miss her. This is really sad.
In my former life, I had plenty of opportunity to work closely with Diana. She did a great job and she will be missed. Great lady.
Commissioner Scott?
She did a good job.
Good job. Commissioner Newbecker?
I would like to add that Diana was a very instrumental in helping me as a, as a new commissioner. She was very helpful, very friendly, and I'd just like to sincerely appreciate her and very sad to see her retiring.
We concur with everything that was just said. Rule call vote? Yes.
Oh, yes. Frank Scott.
Yes.
Yes. Brad Newbecker.
Yes. Resolution carries. Item 7H, claims.
Do you want to get the resolution about the job description?
Oh, gosh, I skipped.
It's okay.
You gotta keep me online. Okay, we.
I'm gonna tell you something.
Resolution to approve job descriptions for custodian and maintenance supervisor slash custodian. This resolution is sponsored by the county administrator. Job descriptions can help identify particular skills or abilities that are necessary for a position or the environmental pressures that apply to the position. A well-written job description establishes a solid set of expectations for employers to communicate to employees by highlighting key duties and responsibilities. The proposed resolution would establish job descriptions for custodians and the maintenance supervisor slash custodian. I apologize for that, guys.
I'll make a motion that we.
And it was a good thing they cited a couple of things that were missing. So yes, we've got concurrence across the board.
Any other discussion?
Agree. We cured a couple of issues by doing this and of course, it's ongoing to revamp all our job descriptions. Everybody needs to have an understanding what they do. Right?
Yep.
He agrees.
Any other discussion? Rule call vote?
Frank Scott.
Yes.
Yes. Mark Sherbrooke.
Yes.
Brad Newbecker. Jenny Davis.
Yes. Motion carries. So 7H claims. This is claims. We have bills for a total of $164,859.06.
Motion that we pay the bills. I support.
We have a motion from Commissioner Serbuk with support from Commissioner Newbecker to pay the total amount of bills of $164,859.06.
Brad and I reviewed claims. The ones that stood out to me would get our allocation of the health department. They lost their, their financial guys, so they billed us two quarterly billings in this go around. They billed us from October to December, then January to March. So that's why that figure's so high. And then there's a one registered deeds automation fund for $19,000. 83163, which were their annual maintenance contracts for trying to think of what I talked to Denise about. So yeah, so I have to wear support for that was the state court. What was the way to jump out at me?
I had a couple, Commissioner Newbecker, did you have?
The only other one that jumped out at me were the 15, roughly $15,000 in costs for Foley and Mansfield for litigation on the cases from October through December.
Are we up to date on that now? That was just a big cost there.
Yeah, they were regularly behind by about two months on their billing by all this wrapping up their, their service to the county. We might get one more. I wasn't quite sure as I read through the dates on the, on the service. So they were technically providing a service through the end of December. The end of it. They are going to carry through on a couple of cases that they were working on. One of those was that tax revolving case that's ongoing. Don't anticipate a lot of billing for that. And then we have the one unemployment case up in the courts that's also wrapping up. So you might get two more bills for those. And then that should be the end for the Foley Mansfield invoices.
What's the Fiddler, is it, were you Fiddler Technology for $19,000? Rad Auto Service.
Yeah, that's.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. I had one other question. I looked over this last night and let me find it. Maybe I did. I see the Oglema. Should have wrote it down. I see a dental service on there too, $350.
What's that?
I see a dental service on there for $350.
Jail?
Yeah.
I was just explaining to him that.
I was just explaining to him that maybe, maybe the sheriff can enlighten us on on inmates and the cost of taking, having inmates. The jail is a, is a big cost for the county. And I was explaining to him, they're there, they gotta eat, we gotta feed them.
We gotta take care of medical issues, their dental issues.
You don't mind coming up and explaining some of that to us, do you?
I, I had a question. Maybe he can give that in his report. I had a question. The Ogumaw County Herald Sheriff Advertising for a hundred and ninety-seven dollars. What did we put in there?
For the USDA grant, vehicles for all that stuff. They have to public, public notice.
I seen a couple here. Okay.
Yeah. Cause they had to put each one in separately. So we had, you know, the
And you think one more for Foley and Mansfield?
One or two, and just depending on how particularly that Fox case, how long that goes.
Okay. We had seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven. Well, thirteen thousand there, roughly. That was a rough estimate. Okay, so this is all the bills for the last pretty much we do this every two weeks. It keeps everything flowing. Lot of money, isn't it? Any other discussion? Roll call vote.
Mark Sherbrooke.
Yes.
Brian Newbecker. Jen David.
Yes.
Frank Scott.
Yes.
Item eight, unfinished business. We have any?
We don't.
Item nine, administrator's report.
Couple of items to bring you up to date on, following up our conversation at the whole meeting. We do have two dates set up right now for our meeting with the Medical Examiner Group, State Police and the Sheriff's Office and the County Prosecutor. Will either be next Friday or the following Wednesday. We're just still trying to coordinate everybody's schedule, but at least we've got it worked up, worked down to two different dates. And I'll just say that each, in each case, all the participants are very enthusiastic about doing this. So I think this is gonna be a a very good win for the county overall. And second piece of very good news, there are two exterior lights that are still needing to be installed at the day treatment facility. Otherwise, that building is finished. And that building will have been completed at just over nineteen thousand dollars under budget, which was good all the way around. I have not been over there yet myself. Reports coming back from the judge at probate, from the friend of the court, are they're very impressed with the building. For those who may not have been over there, the interior will be completely different than what you saw when, when the original building was there. Not only just in terms of it being cleaned up, but walls are in different places and ceilings are different. Very, very worthwhile project. And I know that a friend of the court is very eager to get the, get the services into the building and get operating fully. So that was very good news. That is the end of my report unless there are any questions.
I had asked Tom this morning briefly about the time, the time clocks. Where are we with that? Cause I think we're supposed to have everything in place by March one.
We, and we do pretty well have things in place. We had one final meeting yesterday with the administrative group, which is myself and payroll benefits coordinator to make sure that all the variables that we want are in there. Tomorrow morning, we'll be doing training with our supervisors. These will be the people who are actually approving the time sheets. The payroll benefits coordinator is eager to get going with the clerk's office as our test group, if you will, moving forward. So in the coming weeks, they'll begin inputting their data just to make sure all the systems are working properly. We're pretty confident they will be. And we will begin bringing others online shortly. So this is really happening. We do have a couple of more areas that we need to program for, particularly in the courts, in just in terms of how they're paid. And this is virtually ready to go. And as overtime projected, we will probably end far ahead of schedule. Assuming everything works, we'll probably be completely implemented four to six weeks ahead of when we thought we would be, which is, which is good. But let's, let's just let that play out. We've got a lot of employees to bring on. Particularly, our biggest test will be when we bring on the Sheriff's Office and Corrections. That will be the largest group of employees coming in. But again, I think it's gonna be a pretty smooth transition by the time it's done. So the, the actual time clocks are in, employees have been fingerprinted. So they'll come in and all they'll have to do is touch that and they're good to go.
That'll just help with some of the workload. Nothing else? So now we have.
Elected official and department head report.
Yep, so now what happens is each one of the elected official department heads in the room come up to the podium and give a report. So we're gonna ask the clerk to come on up. Come on up. Report.
So I'm Brett Giltner, Ogumaw County Clerk.
I'm Iowa.
And Iowa's gonna give you guys my report today because I don't wanna get a little choked up because I already did when you asked if I had anything to say on Diane.
We will be having our first election on May third for both our school systems, West French City and Woodmore Prescott. The film deadline for May. What? I the filing deadline for May election has passed, so these will be the only proposal on the ballot. But Giltner will cannot express to you enough how now, how, or how, how thankful her office is with the approved part of time precision. Her entire office is extremely sad to lose a quality employee and Dana Sir, Diana Sir, what, Southern, Sutherland. She will never be replaced completely and will be missed by so many people. Thank you.
Thank you. Good job. It's hard to do. Thank you.
Could you kind of?
Did you have questions for the clerk?
I'm thinking, could you briefly explain what she does so that?
Yeah, absolutely.
What I do?
What, what your department does.
What your office does.
Yeah.
Your department's an office.
The office. Sorry.
So our office, well, my position, I take the notes for the commissioner meetings. We get to do the roll call, call the names on the votes. I type up the minutes after the meeting, which is just everything that happened. Are you bored? No, so our office is the keeper of the birth certificates. So if any of you guys were born in Ogumaw County, we have your birth certificate. Anybody that gets married in our county, we have the marriage certificates. Birth, death, marriage. If you own a business, we have some of the business paperwork in our office. We have anybody that has a court case in our county, we have the felonies, which are serious offenses. And then we have the family court, which is like divorces and stuff like that. We also, we give out concealed pistol licenses. So if any of your family members, they can legally carry a gun with them, they get a card with their picture on it. And that allows, it's kind of like a driver's license, but it allows you to carry a gun. And we're in charge of the elections for the county, so a lot, a lot of fun stuff. That's the main stuff.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No more questions?
Thank you. So now you're gonna ask the treasurer to come on up. Yep, say treasure, come on up. Treasure, come on up. Karen Picklowski, you're Ogumaw County Treasurer.
Jacob Kennedy, Ogumaw County Treasurer.
What's been going on in the county treasurer's office? Well, yesterday we had a land bank meeting. We are reviewing and working on a policies and procedures instruction manual for our, our authority board. Our next meeting is scheduled for April twentieth at ten AM if any of you are interested in attending. I also sent an email to Tim yesterday. Might not have had a chance to review it yet, but the land bank is going to be making a request of the county for our funding in the amount of a hundred thousand dollars. We're also going to be sending information, informational letters out to every local unit to inform them that we exist, what we do, and look to partner with them with light in their area. Tim and I are continuing to work on the jail re-bonding. Our bond sale is going to be on two twenty-two, twenty-two, lucky numbers. So hopefully everything goes well on bond sale day. We received a draft copy of our audit yesterday, so I'll be reviewing that with Jacob today. I want to say thank you for approving the folder insert purchase and
I too want to say how much on this Diana Sutherland. Thank you.
Any questions?
He sends out the tax bills, too.
What, ask the sheriff to come on up?
Good morning. Ryan O'Hara, Ogumaw County Sheriff. Leslie Glon is gonna shadow me today. It's a great program. I wanna get that out there and I really hope we do this every year. This is pretty phenomenal. The only thing that I really have to report is that we're down to one inmate at our correctional facility that has COVID. They are segregated from the rest of the individuals in there. So we'll be retesting here shortly, probably in a day or so. So I expect that to go away. So we're, we're in full operation over there. And our primary job as a sheriff is care and custody of the facility over there, our correctional institution over there. So care and custody is, is number one. We said about the dental. So we, we have to take care of our inmates that's over there. So that's number one, what we have to do. And then we also have to have law and order within our county and the sheriff is responsible for that, along with working conjunction with the MSP and our local PD office. So I, that's all I have to report today. Would you like to say something?
I'm gonna let you on it, huh?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna take him around today and we're gonna give him a, a pretty good education, so.
Sheriff, my young man has a question for you.
Prisoners, do they have to wear masks?
Mask in the, in the jail.
Now's your time. Come on.
Come on.
Any questions for the sheriff?
Marshall here has conveyed to me that he'd like to go to college and learn to be a detective. Do you think that possibly in a few years you might have an opening?
Very well could be.
You might still be there?
I think I've got one that's probably gonna retire in about three or four years, so.
And you wait just a little longer?
Any kind of luck, I'll still be there, too.
Any other questions for the sheriff? Thank you, sheriff.
Do you have anything? Thank you so much.
We have some other department heads in the room. Denise, would you like to come on up? Tell us what you do.
I'm being shadowed today by Ariana.
Hi.
Denise Simmons, Ogumaw County Registered Deeds. Nothing much to report. Land sales are still going through, not at the volume that they were in the summer, but they haven't decreased nearly as much as I would expect in the winter. Our office is responsible for everything that deals with the land. So if you buy, sell, mortgage your land, it's in our office and we hold those records back forever. I was just showing Ariana books back to eighteen sixty and where they were actually handwritten in and told her how important it was that you were able to recursive and she got it. She kind of looked at them like they were a foreign language. So anything that deals with the land is at our office and for most people, their land is their most valuable asset.
Important job. I see I'm claiming something with microphones. Was that trans? Was that moving? I seen it and I apologize. I should've wrote my questions down. I seen a charge on there. Is that your transitioning over?
No, we are required by statute to back up all of our records on microfilm. Microfilm is held in underground storage in the salt mines in Grand Rapids. So one time a year, you will get the invoice for the storage fee in the mines. But that's statutorily, they must be backed up on microfilm. Our Bastion project should be starting hopefully soon. That's the offsite server. So then our server here will not be necessary. Old, I don't know if Tom can use it for anything, but yeah. And looking to be recorded in future, which I'm dragging my feet. I don't really want to.
I was just surprised to see that, so I should've asked that. I apologize. Thank you. We have Randy back there. Can we ask Randy to come on up?
Hi, I'm Randy Booth, the equalization director for the county. Colton has helped me today in learning what we do. And as far as the report, we are in the process. Townships are submitting their assessment rolls in the cities and we're reviewing them. Any, getting the information ready for the assessment change notices that will be sending to the printer next week and sending those out. I'd ask to be on the agenda for the committee, the whole meeting next week and, and so that discuss GIS. We will have more information, but the project of updating the parcels from nineteen ninety-nine to present is just about complete. I got an email from Amalgam yesterday and they're, I'm going to be meeting with them next week and going over, over that and what to look forward to as we continue to upgrade our GIS system. As far as what we do in equalization, we prepare all the tax bills. We prepare the assessment change notices so we can mail them out and all of the township cities and the county can get tax revenues. We compare, we look and study the land values for all the different classes of property. The agricultural properties, industrial properties, commercial and all the residential sales. And we compare those values to how the townships are assessing them and come up with studies that show whether they need to increase or decrease the values for the individual classes of property within their units. We also compile all the millage information for the taxes that are levied. Every October, we have a apportionment hearing with the county commissioners where they approve any millages that are gonna be levied for any of school districts, the counties, townships, cities or other entities that levy a millage.
Any questions for Mr. Booth? Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tom, how about you? This is an extremely important man.
Corey with me today. It's kind of funny because he asked me earlier if I was a nerd of the group.
Good question.
The IP director here. And I maintain all the computers, the servers, the networking, the access control. We have key cards on our doors for let certain people in our offices. I maintain everything here for the county building, the correctional facility, the sheriff's office, the annex and our transit. And we have an RV part two that is actually county owned. So I take care of all those users, the printers, the computers, the networking and whatnot at all those locations. My day-to-day operations, make sure that our backups are changed. With Tim and I were discussing yesterday about putting together something better for a presentation display in the annex building because it's frequently used. So we're gonna head over there in a little bit, take some measurements and change our backups. Do the day-to-day things.
Any questions for Tom? Sets everything up here in the room, make sure that we're being televised.
With the YouTube.
Yes.
So people can see him and they can.
He's a very important man.
And to you.
He does a very good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions? Thanks, Tom.
Yeah, this will be, you wanted, you asked me if this was gonna be on YouTube.
Yes, it will. When does it usually get posted? Um, it takes a couple hours to process and.
Usually same day though?
Yeah, usually, and I'm not gonna lie, so.
No, I'm gay.
I usually post them at least the next day if, but yeah, this will be up there today because actually as a matter of fact, Corey will be doing it.
Oh, okay.
It's been, uh, there's been quite a few views on the last couple of meetings, it's kind of nice to see.
I haven't saw that or I haven't really looked, I guess, I heard a couple rumors that there was.
Yeah.
Don't know what the hot topic.
Well, I know a number of people who watch on a regular basis.
There was one that was out of there, it was like 144 views out of it.
That was two meetings ago.
Was it?
Yeah. It's nice to see.
This one may have a few hits.
Good. We encourage that. On the phone, we have Jeff, he's a veteran. Jeff, do you have a report to give?
Good morning, Jeff Nichols, Veterans Affairs Office. I do not have a shadow, I didn't realize, of course, I have no children, school age anymore. All my children are grown. We will be advertising for county committee, for our veterans committee this month, we'll probably put it out toward the end of the month and request applications received within the first couple of weeks of March. Hopefully I can get that out here pretty soon. We will also be advertising for the Veterans Benefit Counselor position. We will not be doing interviews until probably April or May timeframe as one of my committee members is out of state and won't be back until April sometime. So we won't do any interviewing or hiring process until he gets back. Other than that, it's going pretty well over here, just me and myself and my empty office next door.
Thanks, Steph. Any other department heads or elected officials on the phone? Did I miss anybody in the room? I don't think so. Okay, we got item 11 matters from the floor. We don't have any correct, Tim?
Unless somebody has something.
Motion, item 12, motions for adoption? Item 13, committee reports, Commissioner Sorok.
I attended West Branch City. So they claims Department of Health and Human Services, short meeting Tuesday, West Branch Township last night, West Branch Township, tax collections about 82%, which she says is about the norm ordinarily for this time. So things are going well there. And West Branch Township is, there's gonna be, there's a Republican candidate by the name of Tom Leonard, who's running for Attorney General's position. He's gonna do a meet and greet at the West Branch Township all on February the 18th, between 1:30 and 2:30 if anybody's interested in. Meeting them, I'm gonna speak to them, so.
Anything else?
That's it.
Commissioner Scott?
I have attended two of the four townships meetings so far, the other two are next week. Foster Township and Ogamal Township, they were both very quick meetings, not a lot going on right now. Order review training coming up for the townships. Nemska, I attended by Zoom even though I can't vote because of Zoom, not because we can't vote via Zoom. Planning, we have a meeting coming up later this month. There's quite a bit of action going on every month anymore. We have some tax amendments, we will be, we'll be hell of planning a public hearing about. One thing I'd like to say is Jenny, you brought that book up last year, last meeting, I mean, I went home and I went on YouTube because I guess I'm lazy about reading books.
I thought that.
Yeah. Really gee, six and a half minute video that hits the 13 points real quick. And then there's another, there's, there's three or four other videos and, and one I watched, it was about an hour and 40 minutes long, it's a presentation to a community. And this, this thing, I'm gonna tell you something, watch it. I think that we should play that six and a half minute, minute video to every meeting I go to. If, if half the things don't hit you square in the face, you know, I mean, it is just excellent. I think we should play it here, at least at our committee as a whole meeting. I'd like to play it before each planning meeting. Holy smokes, and I'll tell you, the planning side, it's unbelievable. The township I live in, we're welcoming any business at all. Please bring us a business. The other end of the county, they don't want any business. Matter of fact, one lady told me that we need to find a way to get rid of people out of the county so we don't have so many people here. It's almost like a city. Unbelievable, but, no, that was, that was a great, send this to, to bring, bring in, bring up and we need to really stress it. Matter of fact, I brought it up to the chamber director and she's gonna make, try to make contact to see if this guy does virtual presentations. And put on something at, at community, community level.
Can we put that video on? You sent me the link, I think you sent me the longer one, the hour and a half, the information, but can we put that in the committee of the whole for just the six minute? Presentation, I gave Mr. Commissioner Sorok the book, so when he's done, maybe he can pass the book on to you.
You've got a couple more. I don't know if I got.
Anyways, is that all, Commissioner Scott?
You wanna say something? You can, if you want, right now.
Now is your time? No, okay.
I can probably have this done by Tuesday or Wednesday of next week because my house is in turmoil because they're redoing the whole interior. So I am stuck in my kitchen behind a big piece of plastic, so I'm not getting gravel rustled, right? And I have nothing better to do than sit there and read. So that's what I'm gonna be doing for the next few days.
I thank you commissioners for taking the initiative to, to read that, so.
I appreciate the fact that you brought it up and you're willing to share, it's great.
Commissioner Newbeckers?
Yes, I said correspondence with West Branch Township, they had some more questions regarding the ORV ordinance, haven't heard back from them yet. I don't know if they talked about that in their meeting or not, but township, they didn't have, no, they haven't really said anything one way or the other, but what their thoughts are. And I know what we got.
Mr. Coleman's?
Right, Dean Tucker got that one from Lake County and I, I looked at it and I don't, I think that there's a lot of good stuff in that ordinance, you know, that we need to look at, so.
That's on the committee of the whole, correct?
It is.
Okay.
Just that, and then I wasn't able to make it to Churchill, but I do know that it was a very hot topic this week with the dollar store rezoning. And I believe they voted that down, didn't they?
They did, I was, yep, I was there.
That's all I got.
I had a busy, busy week, two weeks. Did attend the Churchill Township meeting, the sheriff was there as well. Even though that's not my, my, my area, I wanted to attend that, that was related to the hot topic of the dollar store. And that was voted down, there was probably approximately 50 people there, I want to say, it was, it was pretty well attended. I mean, that was the primary business, they, I think it was voted down 47 to three, I could be wrong on that, but their main concerns was traffic. But that's a pretty, pretty nasty corner there at M55 and Wright River Trail. The next step is to take it to the, the zoning and planning commission. And I did make it very verbal that I am not the commissioner that sits on that, that board, I let them know that Commissioner Scott.
You're a target right there.
I've been admitting it, Sheriff. I did not provide your contact information, but I did tell them it was public on the website. Anyways.
It wouldn't matter, they went upon though.
Yes.
Most of them have my number.
So again, it was a lot of residents from Fond Lake, from Lake Ogamal and Boise, and there was one gentleman there from the Dollar, Dollar General, Dollar Tree, Dollar General, I believe, didn't have a lot of information, he, the poor guy was hit kind of hard, nobody was disrespectful though. The meeting was ran fairly smoothly, I thought. He, again, he just asked permission and that was basically all he said, he didn't have any facts or figures or, or anything else, so more to come on that. I told them that I thought you guys were discussing it in February and making a decision in March, so I, you probably will have an audience in February.
Oh, yeah.
I also attended Logan, that was a very long meeting, I, I left after two hours and 15 minutes, it was still continuing. The assessor was there, gave a brief update, they're still talking about garbage, they're even, I, I think the first 15 minutes were trying to approve the minutes. So that, I don't know what else really to say there. Mills, I attended that just Tuesday night, that was fairly short, fairly brief, they changed legal advisors, I think, I thought I saw Lance here, working on some ordinance issues, broadband was there, M33 access was there, that gentleman. Because there were some areas, quite a few areas over there, even though they have charter that do not have service, M33 is a big one there, right there. It doesn't have any service. Fairboard, I attended that as well, they got hit with Churchill came to the meeting and Churchill's cost, Churchill does have a millage for gypsy moths and the cost of that went from, I don't wanna, don't quote me on these figures, I think they went from like $39 to 50 some to spray in, so their cost has nearly doubled. They had in the past, they sprayed the fairboard kind of as a courtesy or the fairgrounds, excuse me, as a courtesy. And with the increase in cost, they can no longer do that. So they came to the fairboard asking for some funding if they would like the fairgrounds sprayed. They had some reserve in there, I think it was like 30,000 and that wasn't even enough to cover the, the change in cost. So not everybody in Churchill Township was being sprayed. And they feel going forward, it's more important to make sure residents are taken care of prior to the fairgrounds itself. So Fairboard is definitely struggling financially, they are on our wish list for the ARPA funds. They're trying, they're trying to move forward and work with the budget they have, but this was another pretty, pretty big hit to them. So, and I know they have applied for a grant, I seen on Mac, I showed it to Mary, Mary Fox was at the Churchill meeting as well, there's a grant on Mac for fairgrounds. And, and I know they are in the process of applying for that as well. I also attended Michigan Works last Friday, they got the report on their audit, that went well, gave report on unemployment. They're talking about the next year doing that, oh, down at Saginaw Valley, that educational seminar, getting that up and rolling again. That's where I talked to the other surrounding commissioners, that's always a pretty interesting meeting because you get some roundtable talk with surrounding commissioners at Michigan Works, so I always enjoy that meeting. And they do very well with their funding, their money's very, very well, so any question? At two of my meetings, Mr. Petrie, the state representative, was there, presented. And then at the Churchill meeting, the gentleman from All Gray, and I can't remember his name, he's been at two of my meetings. Yes, he was, both of them were actually at the Churchill and they kind of started getting hit pretty hard with drainage questions and millage questions and they kind of got off topic there briefly, but um, yeah, both of them gentlemen have been at the township meeting, so I'm sure you'll be seeing them.
Who's the Petrie?
Mr. Petrie?
He's running for?
Yes, he's the RSCOM and the core superintendent, yep. I know he plans on coming to our meeting, I, I want to say committee of the whole, he asked me, so I know he plans on showing up.
Running for state rep?
He's running for state rep, yep. Yes.
And then we saw there in.
Churchill.
In Churchill.
Correct.
Brad?
He's campaigning pretty hard, he spoke very well, he's got a lot of experience. Yes.
Oh, I know.
Yes, he is running. Any questions for me? I have not heard back from Vanderwall's office yet, I reached out again on Monday to Jamie and have not heard back, so as soon as I do, I'll let you know. Oh, I also have in my, I'm sorry, my goodness, in my mailbox, I want to read to you guys, to the Ogamal County Commissioners, you are invited to the West Branch Rec Center for a cup of coffee or hot cider to observe one of the regional volleyball tournaments. Time is 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM, dates February 5th and 6th through March 12th and 13th, every weekend, Saturday and Sunday. Please RSVP to Corey, Dan and Melinda Zettel, so I will leave that with you. I think that's it, did anything else commissioners?
What's your turn?
So we have, hey, Commissioner, so we have item 14, which is the last public comment, this is for any subject matters, again, the same rules apply, three minutes, state your name, come up to the podium. Is there any public comment in the room?
My name is Edward Ferns, I own a local home care business in town, as behalf of home care agencies across the state of Michigan and traumatic brain injury patients. I want to thank you guys, I know it's not, you don't, some of you think it's not your position to take a stand, but I believe it is all of ours to take a stand between what is right and wrong, I know you didn't exactly take a stand, but you encourage talk to legislation to fix this problem and that's what we need to do for the people that cannot do it, and there's 18,000 of them, so thank you very much for that.
Did you have an opportunity to read our resolution?
Uh, I did, I did, it's pretty close to what everybody else has wrote, written, and that's, that's all we're asking, not to side, you know, this isn't about Democrats, Republicans, this is about right and wrong, so thank you very much for that.
Last week when you were here, you, you stated some progress has been made, is anything in the past week?
Well, I heard this morning that they moved it to a different committee and a lot of people on that committee are in on a change, so hopefully, they called it, I think they called it, they either called it last night, it just came about, so I'm not 100%, I was reading it at 10 to 6 this morning, but it just came about, they're gonna all of a sudden have a meeting this morning on it, so we're hoping that they pass something, they get rid of it, even if they just go back to the old fee schedule, because insurance is, could kind of set their own rate, they kind of did a local study and said, no, we're only gonna pay you this, 22 bucks an hour. So we're hoping that something is getting done. I got a couple of their local businesses to write some emails, concerned the problem is a lot of the public doesn't know what's happening, the only ones that actually know are the people that are affected. I read a story this morning, there was a lady that has been wide awake for 26 hours taking care of her husband because her caregivers left, left them. So, you know, we can all imagine trying to stay up for 26 hours taking care of somebody, it would be tough, so.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any other public comment in the room? Come on up, sir. State your name or you're from.
Morning, everyone. My name is Joe Barrera, I'm superintendent of schools of Woodmore Prescott Area Schools. And I'd like to thank all of you for taking time out of your day to mentor all of our new employees, our county employees. And I'd like to thank the Optimist Club of Skidway Lake for making this possible and so many others, so thank you for that. The other thing that I'd like to talk about is earlier in the meeting, there was a vote where Councilman Scott voted no. Okay, and I think that that vote, it wasn't just a vote for all of our new members, that was a great example of, of this process in action. When you work with a group of people, when you sit on a board, when you sit on a committee, you're not always going to agree. Sometimes, no, you're not going to agree on it. And it's okay to say no. But the other important thing about that vote, yes, the vote was no. But everyone on that committee, every one of you respected that no vote. And whatever the, the group decided on, Representative Scott, even though he voted no, the committee, the group said yes. So he said, okay, good, but I got my voice in, my opinion was heard. That's what makes working together, and that's what, that's what being a leader is in a community, is working together, finding solutions to things and respecting the no vote. So always have your say, stand up for what you think is right, but respect the final vote, so thank you very much.
Mr. Pereira, this was a pretty simple agenda, we disagree a lot. Trust me.
It's not always, the no vote is the discerning vote, sometimes everybody's voting no and there's one that's voting yes.
Yeah, absolutely, so it goes the other way too.
Concur with.
One thing I think, I think we need to tell you kids is, when it comes to voting, we have to vote, okay? Now, the only way we cannot vote is if, if, say, it affects my, it affects me personally.
If you're gonna make money on it.
And I have to tell the rest of the board this and ask them for permission to not vote. So sometime, we all have to vote all the time. It's tough sometimes, it's really tough, I can tell you. It's tough sometimes. It's really tough. I can tell you, sometimes you'll vote on things, your friend, be right out here. Your friend might be part of that vote and what, how you decide. It's sometimes tough. It's tough to be the leader in the community.
I think this agenda was, was made up for today.
You have a sitting city council or a sitting student council in your high school. You know, I don't think shadowing there would be probably a good thing.
Is there any other public comment? Thank you, Mr. Pereira. No other public comment in the room? Any public comment on the phone? Any public comment on the phone? So hang on. Ethan's gonna do this part. So this is, we're on item 15, so what does it say? Yep, so ask for a motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn. So now we need support. So we have a motion for adjournment from Commissioner Marshall with support from Commissioner Serbrook. So say, all in favor, say yes.
All in favor, say yes.
Opposed? Say motion adjourns at 10:26 and hit that gap. Meeting, meeting, I'm sorry, meeting adjourns at 10:26.
Meeting adjourns at 10:26.
Thank you. Good job, buddy.